Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time is anyone to approach today. If you would like to sign up for in-person testimony or have any other questions during the hearing, please see the Sergeant at Arms. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of this Subcommittee. I am joined today by Councilmember Abreu, Chair Hanks, Shouman, Carr, and Councilmembers Wang. Today, we are scheduled to hold two votes and one hearing. Starting with the two votes, the first vote concerns a mixed-use residential development known as 135th Street in Harlem. The second vote concerns an application for a demolition special permit in the Clinton section of Manhattan. Today's hearing concerns a residential development project over a rail cut in Borough Park, Brooklyn. I will now go over the hearing procedures. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or through Zoom. Members of public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council's website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse. To sign up, or for those of you here in person, please see one of the Sergeant at Arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Members of the public may also view a live-streamed broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until I recognize you to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimonies to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like to s- excuse me, if you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider instead of appearing in person, please email it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Written testimony may be submitted up to three days after the hearing is closed. Please indicate the LU number and/or the project name in the subject line of your email. We request that the witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by myself, as Councilmembers may have questions. Lastly, for everyone attending today's meeting, this is a government proceeding and decorum must be observed at all times. Members of the public are asked not to speak during the meeting unless you are testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who are called to testify, and no video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recording as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant at Arms for inclusion in the hearing recording. Beginning with the votes, the first proposal we are voting on today is to approve LU's 149 through 152 relating to the 135th Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Abreu's district. The proposal seeks to develop a residential mixed-unit building just south of Riverbank State Park. The proposed development will have approximately 60 apartments, of which 15 to 18 will be permanently affordable. The proposal consists of four actions. The first is a zoning map amendment to change an existing manufacturing M1-1 district to an R7-2 residential district with a C2-4 commercial overlay. The second action is a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The text amendment would also extend the special Manhattanville mixed-use district to include the development site. The third action is a special permit within and over the railroad right-of-way, right-of-way, immediately to the west of the site. The fourth action is a separate special permit to modify the applicable bulk and yard regulation given the unique design constraints of the development site. Councilmember Abreu supports this proposal. Councilmember Abreu, you have any remarks?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Today, I am voting in support of the 135th Street rezoning proposal, which represents a crucial opportunity to address the housing challenges that our city, especially my district, faces. District 7 ranked 34th citywide in affordable housing production from 2014 to 2023. Every day, I hear from constituents about their struggles to find housing and remain in their neighborhoods. I hear about impossibly high rents and threats of eviction. We cannot solve our housing crisis without increasing housing production. The 135th Street project would be a positive step towards reversing the downtrend in housing construction. It will bring 60 new residential units to the district, with 15 to 18 of those units designated as affordable under the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program. For years, 701 West 135th Street has been woefully underused. In a city where land is our most precious and limited resource, we have allowed a stretch of Upper Manhattan along the Hudson River to be abandoned. No businesses, no homes, just trash, crumbling infrastructure, and the blight that comes along with it. The property owner has attempted for years to make better use of the space, and no New Yorker should tolerate a city council that insists on maintaining the status quo in this location. By transforming this underused site, we will not only provide much-needed housing, but also revitalize the area with a mixed-use development and community space that the developer has committed to offering at reduced cost to a local nonprofit. In addition, the developer has committed to building a public bathroom, maintained by building staff, in a high-traffic area used by cyclists and pedestrians along the river. The project will not obstruct park views and is no longer opposed by the Riverside Park Conservancy. I have heard and I acknowledge the community members who asked questions and raised concerns about this proposal in good faith. It is due to this input that we were able to negotiate additional amenities, flood mitigation, and specific structural choices. My office will engage in ongoing monitoring as the project moves forward to ensure it develops as expected. While no project is perfect, we must recognize the reality we face. My office is visited by dozens of residents every week who are desperately searching for housing. Many are living in aging apartments with persistent housing code violations, are severely rent-burdened, or have outgrown their current space but can't find affordable alternatives. This project is a vital step toward addressing the demand for safe, affordable housing. I thank the many local organizations supporting this rezoning, including Harlem Pride, the West Harlem Group Assistance, Westside Federation for Senior Supportive Housing, Broadway Housing Communities, Community Life, Open Plans, and Open New York. I also thank Borough President Levine for his invaluable support and recommendations for this project. Their support reflects the broad recognition of the importance of this project for our community's future. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Abreu. The second vote is to approve LU 153 relating to the request for a demolition special permit regarding 343 West 47th Street in Councilmember Botch's district. The application seeks to proceed with demolition of a building where work was stopped for failure to have required demolition's approval. Councilmember Botch supports this proposal. Just gonna get a brief hold real quick. Thank you. All right, we're gonna postpone the votes until after the hearing, so I'm gonna begin with the first hearing right now. So I will now open the first public hearing on LU's 164 through 172 related to the Brooklyn Yards proposal located in both Councilmember Jaeger and Councilmember Shouman's districts. The proposal seeks to build approximately 270 residential units and commercial space in a series of buildings, most of which would be located over the railroad cut in Borough Park that is used as a freight line, excuse me. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I will now call the applicant panel for this proposal, which consists of Ken Fisher, Rachel Skoll, and Jay Valgora. Council, please administer the affirmation.
Good afternoon. Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Kevin Fisher.
Rachel Skoll.
Jay Valgora.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley, members of the committee. My name is Ken Fisher. I'm a member of the law firm of Cozen O'Connor. We're Land Use Council for this project. The graphic in front of you shows what we intend to build, approximately 270 units of housing in the Borough Park section of Brooklyn. But there's a particularly unusual feature to this project, which is the reason that we have as many applications pending before you, actions and special permits and the like.
You can just say next.
I did.
Oh, sorry. Bit of a delay.
Okay. And that is that the line that bisects the site, we'll zoom in in a moment, is actually a rail cut. It's a right-of-way. It's below grade. It's owned by the Long Island Railroad. It's used currently for limited freight service, but is also the place where the governor has proposed passenger service, known as the IBX, because the rail line runs from Bay Ridge all the way up to Queens. There's three, I think, key facts about the history of this project. One is, is that about 40 years ago, the property was owned by Conrail, not the Long Island Railroad, and they sold to my client's predecessor in title the right to build over the rail tracks at a certain height, and the right to put columns down to hold up the platform that would support the housing. It's subject to their design approvals and many other aspects, as you can imagine. My client bought a portion of the development area, it's not development rights, it's actually a fee above a plane. My client bought three blocks in this area. Next. So, the three things that I wanted to mention are that, one, the population of Borough Park has grown at a tremendous rate in the last 40 years. Two, the amount of new housing built has not kept up with the demand. It's a very overcrowded neighborhood, one of the most overcrowded outside of Manhattan, because there simply wasn't a lot of development sites and only a handful of apartment buildings have been built. And three was that for that entire 40-year period, people have been looking at this rail cut and trying to figure out if there was a way that it could be put to use to meet the housing needs of the city. No one was able to come up with a way to do that that was viable, and quite frankly, approvable, until our client set their mind to figuring out a solution in the best interests of the community, and they are from the community and know it very well. And they put together a really terrific team to design it. You'll hear in a minute from Jay Valgora, who's the principal of Studio V, who's been the project architect. I want to mention AARP, who are our engineers. They're leading railroad platform engineers in the country, Hudson Yards among other things. We have a full team, Ken Smith, landscape architect, an ADA consultant, Philip Habib for our environmental, and AECOM Tishman providing cost estimating and other services. So, my colleague Rachel Skoll is going to walk you through the application itself briefly. Jay will then walk you through the project, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. We were very pleased to have the recommendation of both community boards that are overlapping, and as well as the Borough President. Obviously, they had their recommendations. I want to express appreciation at the outset to Councilmember Shouman, Councilmember Jaeger, their staffs, the Land Use staffs. We've had some very constructive conversations, and we look forward to continuing them after this hearing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Skoll. I'm also with Cozen O'Connor, Land Use Council for the applicant. Next slide, please. So the three blocks that we're talking about today are currently zoned M11 and R5. Next slide, please. We are proposing about 14 actions, one of which is the rezoning you see here. Page left, we're rezoning to a C45, and page right, an R6, and a C24 commercial overlay at 16th Avenue to bookend the block. Next slide, please. Looks like we got a little out of order here, but this is just to show you the division between the two council districts. Page left, that is Councilmember Shouman's district. Page right, those two blocks are in Councilmember Jaeger's district. Next slide, please.
Just to mention, there's a list of presentations.
Yeah. It looks like the slides got a little bit out of order, but I just wanted to briefly touch on, we have a whole list of actions in, hopefully in the hard copy that you have. In addition to the rezoning that we just saw, there are a number of special permits required in order to make this development happen. We have three different zoning lots, so that means one special permit for each zoning lot just to build the platform over the rail itself. We are also developing these as a large-scale general development, and with that, seeking certain bulk waivers, and that allows us to create a contextual and efficient development on these very odd-shaped zoning lots. We are also seeking authorizations to waive enclosed parking requirements, because we cannot build a cellar above a railroad right-of-way, and so instead of enclosed bicycle parking, we have unenclosed bicycle parking. We are looking at a special permit to reduce the number of parking spaces within the development overall. We originally included 40 spaces in our proposal, but at the request of both community boards, we have upped that to 80 spaces. And finally, we are looking at text amendments to expand the transit zone to cover these sites, which are directly adjacent to the subway, and also a text amendment to map the sites for MIH options 1 and 2. Now I'm gonna hand it over to Jay.
Thank you, Rachel. Good afternoon. My name is Jay Valgora. I'm a partner with Studio V Design and Planning, which is a women minority-owned business here in the city of New York. I am a licensed architect and a certified planner. I'm happy to take you into this. This is a really unusual project. You can see here from the first slide that it's a very transit-oriented site, and that's key. And yet, in some ways, as Ken alluded, this rail cut creates kind of a slice through the neighborhood. It divides the neighborhood, and the opportunity to build on top of it allows us to really knit the community back together again, which you can see a bit in this view here from the south. It's very important to us that the design be commensurate with the scale of the community, and so we did a great deal of work in order to ensure that the buildings would fit in with the scale. I think the order is a little different. Let's see which one is next. Let's see what comes up here. But this gives you an overall view of it, and the renderings were supposed to be a bit more at the end. So here, you can see the southern view, and of course, the street is, the site is bounded by 59th Street and 62nd Street, and goes from New Utrecht Avenue over to 16th Avenue. And as Rachel alluded, it's these very unusual lots that cut through the middle of the block because they're really the vestigial elements of this former rail cut. Here on the south side, you can see we're immediately adjacent to the train station on New Utrecht. There is a proposal for a small commercial building there of about 10 stories, and then the remainder of the buildings are all six-story and four-story buildings. We really worked with the fabric of this community. In other words, we really looked to create small, classic Brooklyn walk-up type units that are really only four stories with a small mezzanine, as well as six-story apartment buildings.
I'm sorry, about the slides. Are we on the right slide right now?
I'm just kind of going with it and presenting it as I see it, so I can, you know, keep going.
We don't know what happened.
As it comes, okay. I'm just trying to coordinate with the person who's controlling this.
Yeah. I mean, these look great, and they tell the story, so I'll just keep going. This is a view from the opposite side, where you can see, again, the office building to the right at New Utrecht, and you can see the smaller walk-up buildings to the left, as well as the apartment building to the right between the walk-up buildings. And you can see how they really fit into the scale of the streetscape. Next slide. Here is a view from the center of the block, and you can see the unusual configurations of the block as we zoom in on it, where you can see each of the different components and how they fit in, and how we really worked to create something that would tie into the scale of the neighborhood. There's a total of 14 buildings, and so instead of creating a mega-development, we really worked to create a series of smaller, individual buildings that would fit into the unusual site and fit into the scale and character of the community. Next slide. Here is a detail all the way to the right-hand side of the site, I guess the easternmost portion of the site, and you can see, again, the smaller buildings on the right-hand portion, one of the apartment buildings within the center. You can see the landscaped area that has that kind of those slightly warmer-colored trees, kind of brown trees for the fall, and that's actually a parking area, and then there's a small retail building along 16th Avenue. So we really worked to create something that would, again, fit into the individual character of the neighborhood and work with its scale. We also created, which is hopefully coming up, next slide, a series of public spaces or green areas. So this includes, in this view here from 61st Street, you can really see the character and scale of the walk-ups. It's really inspired by Brooklyn housing types with stoop gardens, trees, individual buildings, and we're using different characters and different materials to break down the scale and really make it fit into the community like classic Brooklyn housing. Next slide. Here you can see a view, and the fence is a little unusual. We were asked to add this into some of the views. I find it, you know, a little bit striking, but basically, you can see how it's built over the rail cut. And if you go to the next slide, hopefully, we'll show, yes, this is really a landscaped green area that's just a pedestrian connection that leads through it for the use of the residents, and it provides a place for, you know, people to take children, to take your bikes, but it really provides a kind of a green area that connects through the development and makes a kind of a link between all the different components. Next slide. This is a view from that green area, and I think the next one shows that, again, we added the fence because there were questions. I see. Just to make sure that, you know, that it would be safe, but really, we're using landscaped plantings and green plantings in order to create a buffer and a screen, but we think it's very important, and this really would be the equivalent of a rear yard condition. So it was also important for us in order to create a series of garden elements here for the housing. And the next slide. And then finally, the access to that is provided through these series of archways. This is a view from New Utrecht, where you can see we created these beautiful series of archways that would kind of create the link into this, as well as on the left, we created additional public access area. That's a plaza, actually, that we've created, working with our landscape architect, to create public and open areas to also create greater amenities for the neighborhood that would be open to the entire public. Next. And then this is a view on the other end, again, showing that passage leading through. We also included an additional public area for a children's playground, which we thought was very important for this community also, and again, green spaces that would actually link the different buildings together and fit them into the community. Next. And then we have the proposed actions, which maybe Rachel can take us into.
Next slide, please. So this is what I went through earlier. This is our list of proposed actions. There are 14 total. I'm not gonna walk you through all of them again, but here you can just see them. And then this is a diagram just showing where these waivers, these bulk waivers would be taken. It's really a result of the odd shape of these zoning lots. If we were to comply with yard and light and air requirements as they are written, the site would be unbuildable. Next slide, please. And this is showing that same thing. Next slide, please. Next slide. And that is just an overview of the development once more, and with that, thank you for bearing with us on these slides, and we're ready to answer questions.
Thank you. Sergeants, Ken, why don't you find Councilmember Shouman for me? Thank you. Before we go into questions, I'm just gonna now call for a vote. To approve with modifications, LU's 149, 150, 151, and 152 relating to the 135th Street rezoning proposal, the modification is to strike option 2 from the MIH area to be mapped. The second vote is to approve LU's 153 relating to the demolition special permit request regarding 343 West 47th Street. We've also been joined remotely by Councilmember Salam. Council, can you please call the roll?
Chair Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Abreu.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanks.
Aye.
Councilmember Salam.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And I think we will hold the vote open until Councilmember Shouman comes back. Okay, we can resume the hearing.
Thank you for your presentation. We're gonna hold the vote open. This is quite an unusual proposal in terms of its projected location on top of a railroad cut. I would imagine it is very costly to build the needed platform for these new buildings. Could you please explain further why and how this project is financially feasible?
So, Ken Fisher, thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman. I want to start with what the project isn't, because for many years, people thought that the only way you could build over these railroad tracks was by putting up towers, right? They assumed that the platform was gonna be super expensive and that you had to go high-density. Obviously, that would have been difficult to get the community to accept. It turns out that the bigger the building, the more expensive the platform, and it didn't pencil out. What the design team was able to figure out was that by removing the heights of the buildings down to four and six stories, they were able to use a more efficient construction technique called light metal framing. They also eliminated certain requirements that would have been applicable under the building code or the zoning for taller buildings, and so the project pencils out. Now, having said that, let's make a couple of points. One is, anyone who is a developer in New York is simultaneously an optimist and a pessimist because you can't foresee every possibility. A few years ago, we were actively pursuing this project when there was no 421A program, and it would have been unfinancable. We now have the 485X. We anticipate applying for that and qualifying. Secondly, as you all know, the special permits that we're requesting have a long duration. Projects like this may not get built overnight. It's going to take a considerable period of time before we can do the construction drawings and the engineering and satisfy the MTA and the Buildings Department and be ready to go into the ground. Hopefully, by that point, interest rates will have moderated again, construction costs will have at least flattened. That's how we're assuming it's gonna go forward. But I think the, so the best answer to your question is that the developers believe in this project. They have spent millions of dollars over the course of a decade to move this project forward because they believe that it is critically important for their community. And whatever obstacles we've had in the past, we've managed to overcome. Whatever obstacles we'll face in the future, they are committed to overcoming, including the requirement for financing. It is why we've asked for a certain amount of flexibility- It is why we've asked for a certain amount of flexibility with respect to the MIH solution, and we look forward to moving this project forward as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I'm going to reopen the vote.
Councilmember Scholman?
Aye.
By a vote of six in affirmative, zero opposing, and zero abstention, items are approved or approved with modification and described by the chair, and all items are referred to the full land use committee.
Thank you, Counsel. I have two more questions, and I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Zwan. Can you provide a breakdown of the unit sizes and what is the average square footage for each unit type?
So in our application, we are looking at a mix of units, 270 units that were about 40% one bedrooms and then a 60% mix of twos and threes. Since then, we have had conversations about reducing the number of one bedrooms and adding four-bedroom apartments. That, of course, does bring down the overall number of units to, I think it's approximately 242 units, but it would include 81 two-bedrooms, 85 three-bedrooms, 21 four-bedrooms, and only 23% of the units, or 55, would be one bedrooms. That really reflects the large family sizes in this neighborhood and the type of housing that's needed, but we have not made any definitive decision yet because, obviously, with 270 units, that does produce more housing and more affordable housing versus the 242 with the larger unit sizes. If there's anything you want to add?
Did you conduct market research to determine local demand for commercial space? And if so, how was the research conducted and what were the findings?
Ken Fisher, I don't think there's been any kind of formal study, but the developers live in the community, they work in the community, they're speaking on an almost daily basis with brokers, but they also know what the needs of their own selves, their families, their friends are. There's very little commercial office space in the, in the area. We think particularly after the pandemic, there's going to be an interest in people who want to be able to walk to work. They don't want to necessarily commute into, into the city as we see in other places. This is also an area that has unusually high demand for institutional space, schools, catering facilities, places of study and the like. So we think there may be some demand there, but that's not who it's being designed and marketed for. It's intended for small users, professionals, businesspeople who want to work someplace out of their houses but don't necessarily want to commute to the central business districts. They're pretty confident about it. Originally, we had plans to, to do additional housing on that block, and they decided to move towards a office solution, one because of the, of the demand, also it, it doesn't burden the neighborhood in quite the same ways. But the principal thing was that they think that this is a commercially viable solution.
Thank you. I'm going to yield and give the floor to Councilmembers Wayne.
Thank you, Chair. And after Chair's question, I think I have additional question about the 10-story commercial building. There's commercial buildings nearby there, as I know, still empty for two years already, at least as I know. How do you see this development is very different from the other ones? So you able to find tenants?
Thank you, Councilmember. I can't speak specifically to other buildings in the area, and quite frankly, what's happened with the office market in New York has been unusual since the pandemic. So whatever their relationship is with their lenders, whatever rents that they projected may account for, for their difficulties in, in renting up. Our clients will, will price this for the market. They will need a bank to finance it that believes in their underwriting. If that is viable now, as they believe it is based on their own experience and the rents that they pay in some cases for their own offices, they'll be able to move forward. The market will ultimately dictate what that is. Again, with the other buildings, I don't know what size floor plates they're offering, what amenities they're offering. There's been a flight to quality in office buildings around the city. There's also a dichotomy between some landlords that only want what are called credit tenants, you know, companies that can guarantee the leases, others focus more on smaller service offices. So we think that the, the demand is there. The fact that it's next to a subway station and potentially an IBX station at some time in the future, we think it'll make, will be considerably more attractive than any other product in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. And also, second question, there's a serious need in, about senior housing in my district. Have you guys ever explored a senior option for this development?
The answer to that is, is yes. I myself had direct conversations with Commissioner Carrion at HPD about it. The reason we're not able to pursue that, there's a couple of, a couple of them. The, first of all, the project was not conceived with that in mind. The, the apartment buildings are too small for HPD proposals, and what would be the land acquisition cost, the cost of the development rights and the portion of the platform would create a land cost well in excess of what HPD would be prepared to, prepared to subsidize. There's also the additional unique condition of the fact that the platform has to be built all at once, and funding for senior housing is uncertain at best. So potentially, you'd have a situation where the other buildings would have to pay for that portion of the platform, which would make that block probably unfinanceable, or they would have to hold up that entire block in the hopes that HPD subsidies might come through at some point. There are some additional reasons having to do with the size of the buildings. We looked at how many smaller units we could potentially put in, place there, and some additional factors, and ultimately came to the conclusion that, that senior housing was not available. I can tell you, however, that because our clients are in the real estate business in the area, they understand the need and would be happy to work with your office to see if they could identify an alternative location that might be viable without all of the complications that this site has.
Thank you. And also, please explain what mayor, measurements are incorporated into the proposal to assure ADA accessibility, especially for the contact of 12 walking up buildings?
Jay Vagor, the architect. Accessibility is critical in all of our projects. As a licensed architect who stamps and seals the drawings, I'm personally accountable to ensure that we fully comply with all of the New York City laws. In this particular case, there's a, a good solution. We're working with Accessibility Services, which is, in my opinion, the top accessibility consultant in the city, and they've worked closely with us on every aspect of it to ensure that we have full accessibility. The apartment buildings are easy. They're elevator buildings, and so they offer full accessibility to all units. The walk-up buildings, there is provision within the ADA law and within the accessibility laws of New York that we can make the ground floor units accessible, and that percentage of accessibility is suitable. That's how we actually do it with all walk-up buildings and new walk-up buildings in New York City. So that's fully compliant, and so it's very important for us that we ensure that we meet all of the accessibility requirements and meet the needs of all New Yorkers.
If I can just add to that, and we can point that out in the, in the, in the renderings later if, if you're interested, all of the, all of the units are front on a street, and the, the row houses, which Jay showed you, have stoops, but the ADA apartments will be at grade. So you won't have to go up a flight of steps to get to the first apartment. The ADA apartments will be right at, at, at street level.
Next question related to parking. So I heard you got the increased number of parking. How many for commercial? How many for residential?
Right now, all the parking is for residential. The reason is that that commercial building is really designed and thought to be for local businesses, people who want to walk to work, as Ken was talking about earlier. In addition, it is directly at the DNN subway lines, so we really see that as transit-oriented offices, local offices, and reserving the 80 parking spaces for the residents.
So there's no parking for commercial at all?
There's no dedicated parking for the commercial at all. I also want to mention that, that some years back, we did a survey of parking garages in the area, and if my recollection is correct, most, if not all, of the parking garages within walking distance of the site had vacancies, at least at that point in time.
And also, when we talk of parking, that area has high traffic, that's high traffic area. Is there any special plan you guys have for that issue?
The, the, the parking entrances are designed to code, and, and there's, you know, Department of Transportation, Department of Buildings has rules for that. We haven't developed any special parking plan because there was no significant impact identified in our environmental review, but we do have Philip Habib as our environmental consultant, and they're one of the leading traffic engineers in the city. And if they have any recommendations about queuing or signaling or whatever, you know, we'll, they'll make them available to us. But the environmental, the environmental assessment did not identify a need for signal changes or other things as a significant impact.
We could just add that the project is transit-oriented, and so it has immediate access to a number of train stations as well as other transit assets, and so we work hard in order to make sure that, you know, we do developments in transit-rich areas as this site is. And then finally, it's really important because this is a neighborhood that is crowded, and there's a lot of people on the sidewalks, and so that's part of the reason we created significant new public spaces and pedestrian connections through the site that actually weren't required, but we created pedestrian links to allow people to sort of, you know, get off the busy sidewalks or not conflict with cars for, you know, parents with children and so forth, and that was an essential part of the design strategy.
And what will sanitation plan be for this site? Like, how do you storage the trash there?
So that's a great question. Thank you, Councilmember. So there are 14 individual buildings, and so, you know, we take a lot of care to figure out how we're going to handle services for each building, and it won't be a burden on the community. So because there are 14 buildings as opposed to sort of one mega-development, if you will, or towers, where they sort of pile up the trash on the sidewalks, we can actually keep the trash within each individual building and then, you know, bring it to the curb just for collection as necessary. So it really divides it up. Every single building, as Ken mentioned, has a door directly to the street, is required by general city law in New York City. And so it really allows us to kind of divide up the services, deal with it on a smaller scale, and address it within each of the individual buildings, so it's not a burden on the neighborhood.
And what's your strategy for marketing the MIH units to the diversity community in District 43?
I'm glad you asked that, that question, Councilmember. So as, as I think all of the members are aware, in order to be able to pull our building permit, the developers will enter into a regulatory agreement with HPD with respect to the MIH units. Pursuant to that regulatory agreement, there will be a not-for-profit organization that is designated to handle the marketing and the, and the tenant screening. We have not yet determined who that is. There's a good chance that the developers will do a request for proposals for qualified organizations, some local, some citywide, but they have determined that part of the criteria for their selection of a not-for-profit will be an organization that commits to having staff that are able to interact with the local communities in their own languages. Predominantly in that neighborhood, it's, it's Yiddish. That is not going to be a concern because the developers themselves are fluent. But the other Italian, the other language groups that are significant in that area, Chinese, probably top of the, of the list, some Spanish-speaking people, there's still clusters of Italian-speaking people in the area, although fewer where it's not their native language. So I can commit to you on behalf of the developers that they will have a robust outreach program administered by a not-for-profit, and the not-for-profit will commit to having Chinese-speaking staff, will have materials in Chinese, and to the extent that we're able to support interest in it in other languages as well. And quite frankly, we'd look forward to working with your office to identify people that might be able to support that need.
Thank you. There's a demand in the area for accessible, accessible space for community events. Are you able to commit to provide community facility space? If so, how much?
So based on conversations that we've had outside of this hearing room, we've been giving a lot of thought to it, and there are, there are two things I think that we can offer to meet the, the community's needs. One would be to create an event space that would be made available for a certain number of days each month. There would be no charge for the space itself. There would have to be arrangements for security and, and cleaning, and that space would otherwise be available for tenants of the, of the building or, or, or other permitted uses. We think that that space would work well on the first floor of the office building. I can't give you the exact dimensions of it yet because we have to work with the architect a little bit to figure out what that is. The floor played, each, each floor, I think, is only 5,000 square feet, but we think, and we would have to accommodate elevators and staircases and things. But we, we, the developers are, are committed to creating a community event space or an event space that can be used by the community, and I would point to the discussions that we had with respect to the Parkchester rezoning that the land use staff is familiar with. In addition to that, and also using one of the development sites in Parkchester as a model, the developers are prepared to, in effect, reserve a floor for a community facility use. Now, community event space is different from community facility, which is a zoning designation. If there's a community facility user that would be interested in space in the office building, they're prepared to make a floor available where effectively they're providing the core and shell. The fit-out would be up to the, to the user. As with the Parkchester project, it would be made available on commercially reasonable terms. They're not necessarily looking to make a huge profit off of it, but they're not also prepared to, to lose money on it, and the user would have to be identified and be prepared to close, and I'll explain that in a second, by the time we're ready to start construction because we, in order for our, us to be able to get our construction loan, we're going to have to know what we're building and, and for who. The reason I mentioned the closing is because if it is a not-for-profit organization but is a tenant, the building would be subject to full property taxes. So what we would, we would be prepared to do would be to condominiumize that floor so that that floor could be sold to a not-for-profit organization. Council finance staff here is very familiar with the use of capital funds if, if the council is interested in supporting a project like that, but it could be any user. It could be a school, daycare, medical offices, anything that's permitted under the zoning resolution. We're prepared to hold the floor, and if they want more than a floor, we could discuss that also, but on commercially reasonable terms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Wayne. Are there any other council members with questions for this panel? There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the special permit application relating to Brooklyn Yards proposal?
Yes, Chair, we have one person signed up online who would like to testify.
For the members of the public here to testify, please note that the witnesses will generally be called in panels of three. If you have a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when I say you may begin. I'm going to call on Solomon Lebovitz. We only have one person signed up to testify online. Solomon, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Okay. My name is Solomon Lebovitz, and I'm a local real estate broker in the Borough Park neighborhood. My name is Halal Malabowitz, and I'm a local real estate broker in the Barrow Park neighborhood, so I would like to call in and recommend that, I know that there's a big housing crisis in Barrow Park, and we do need developments like this to be built, and many, many more, so I would like to urge everyone to consider this development and build the further, right, developments in Barrow Park.
Okay, Solomon, are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony.
Chair, we do not have anybody else signed up online or in person to testify.
There being no other members of the public who wish to testify on LU's 164 to 172 regarding the Brooklyn Yards proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. That concludes today's business, I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Council, Land Use, and the other council staff, and the sergeant in arms for participating in today's meeting, this meeting is hereby adjourned.